Can I get a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to be on board docs?
Um, you know what? We don't have to actually. Depending on, I guess, once we have a resolution, Victoria was going to try to put it together, but we also don't necessarily need to.
I can, I can put it in for you. It's probably good so that the public can see it if they're on board docs, but I can put it in for you.
Okay, I just didn't know if I needed to log in. I can do that now.
I have Diana motioned and Yorgos second. If you want to do all I can. Or if you want to vote, whoever doesn't vote, I'll ask them.
Okay.
I have. Is it in Yorgos? Do you want to vote?
Yeah, yes. Sorry, I, I, I don't have the computer in front of me, so.
Okay, so Yorgos is yes, Susan?
Yeah, yes, I can get on if you want me to.
Okay, that's unanimous. It's up to you.
Okay, great. Um, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um, the purpose of this meeting is to kind of make sense of our, our calendar in light of, um, the various state education law guidance that we've gotten. So I'll let Jeff or Ellie jump right in and kind of, um, explain the context and what our options are.
Sure. So first of all, I apologize for, for the late notice, but everything is somewhat, we're very fluid at this point. Um, earlier this week, the state indicated that they expected schools to be in session during, um, the period covered by the executive order, which is through April fifteenth. Uh, so what that means for us is that we need to make a decision as do many, many districts on Long Island and in New York, uh, as to how we plan to address the spring break. So there are really four options, um, that the administrators have identified. Uh, the first option would be to adhere to the original district calendar uh, and basically just go on break without posting anything to teacher websites. So in this scenario, it would basically be we're adhering to the regular district calendar and everybody goes on spring break. The problem, the potential problem with this scenario is that it runs, uh, or contradicts the state order. So in essence, the state could choose to withhold state aid because we did not comply with their edict. Currently, uh, our state aid is 1.8 million dollars per year. That could change, um, as we were recently informed by the state. But if it were to stay, uh, at the 1.8 million, it works out to roughly $10,000 per day. So if there were five days in the break, um, we could stand to lose, uh, in and around $50,000. Uh, that's assuming that, uh, the governor and the state education department follows, existing guidance on how to distribute state aid. Uh, it's not outside the realm of possibility that they could decide to impose a different lens and in fact, um, essentially fine the district or deprive them of more than $50,000, depending on what formula they use. So for instance, they could unilaterally to, say no state aid, uh, to Sag Harbor because you didn't comply with the directive for the entire period that you were closed, which could end up being like 30 or 60 days. It's just an unknown at this point. So option number one represents a gamble. Option number two is that we adhere to the original district calendar, but we post remote learning opportunities on the internet tomorrow afternoon. So when we, um, submitted our remote learning plan, uh, to the state of New York, you, we listed a bunch of different, um, ways in which we were going to deliver remote learning, including in, included in that document, um, were basically, assignments posted to the internet. So theoretically, we would be complying with the remote learning plan that was filed with the state. Um, and in this scenario, the work would be posted for students to engage, but the teaching staff would essentially be on break during that timeframe. Uh, what this would, um, enable the district to accomplish is the teachers would not be working beyond what was contractually stipulated or what was stipulated in their contract. Uh, the potential downside to this scenario is that the state could determine that the district posting remote learning opportunities to the internet didn't comply with their interpretation of what, um, instruction should look like, and they could potentially fine us, as I referenced in, as I, similar in a way to I referenced in scenario number one. It's a gamble. Uh, I don't think it's as large a gamble as number one, but it's still a gamble. Option number three would be that the district, uh, could move the break to a later date and then address the issue, um, later, essentially cancel spring break and, uh, have the teachers be delivering, uh, remote learning opportunities and be available to students over the spring break. The advantage to this scenario is that we are not, um, subject to any denial of state aid. However, um, it could obligate the district to compensate teachers beyond, um, days worked that are outlined in the contract. So for instance, if the teachers are obligated to work 180 days and we cancel spring break and they work through the remainder of the year, they could in fact work in excess of 180 days, in which case the district would be on the hook, uh, for compensating the teachers for those additional days. And that, uh, daily, um, fee, if you will, if we were to compensate the entire teaching staff, which is who would have to work, uh, the, the daily rate of pay, including, uh, benefits and such, is $92,000. So theoretically, um, depending on a lot of unknowns, we could be on the hook for between one and four days. So the, the cost of option number three could range from 92,000 to 368,000. There is a possibility that the state, um, could reduce the number of days sometime this spring from 180 to a lesser amount, in which case we would not incur any additional cost. But that's, as with almost all things at this point, that's an unknown. There's one more option, which, um, entails some contractual issues that we would have to address in an executive session. So in summary, I've, I've addressed the first three. I'm going to add a little bit of commentary, uh, so that the board is aware of what the administrators have been thinking all along. We, um, approached remote learning in a very measured, uh, thoughtful way from the start. And we've tried to do this, uh, we've tried to say, to, to stay consistent in that thinking. All along, we thought that we were going to be, uh, taking our spring break and that we would be, um, moving into the next phase of our remote learning on the Monday after break, which I believe is April thirteenth. And we've been working with the staff, uh, the faculty, both at the elementary, middle and high school, to, uh, roll out that next phase, which is going to include some different delivery models and some scheduling pieces. Um, so we're sort of committed to that model. Uh, I believe if we opened up for, um, the spring break, um, there has not been a tremendous amount of planning that's gone into that because we were not under the impression that in fact, that was what we were going to do. But as has been the case all along with this, unfortunately, everything is moving day in and day out. So the administrator's preference is to, uh, go with option two, present the learning opportunities to our students, let them remain engaged if that's what they choose to do, um, hope that the state accepts that and then roll out our, uh, our next phase of remote learning on April thirteenth. Another consideration beyond our measured and, and calculated way of, of how we've approached everything all along is that Mr. Malone, Ms. Carriero and myself, uh, in talking to parents and to students and to faculty have sensed that, uh, it's not necessarily a bad thing to hit the pause button for the break, uh, given that there's been an awful lot of anxiety and stress, uh, given the circumstances out locally and nationally and actually worldwide. So we think there's a benefit to having this break and, and allowing students and families to come back, as charged up as they can be to, uh, approach the, the rollout of the next phase of the remote learning on April thirteenth. So I think I've covered everything, um, other than option number four, which again, if that's something we need to discuss, I recommend that we go into executive session due to the contractual, uh, pieces associated with that.
Um, I've got one question, Jeff. Um, on option number three.
Yes.
Um, is the governor's order right now only through April fifteenth, but much like it was through April one, as it got closer, he changed it to fifteen. So it's one of these things where right now he's saying fifteen, but, um, it could easily turn into thirty in a, in a week. Um, is that the, is that the understanding on, on his executive order?
Uh, that's, that's my understanding. I, I mean, I'm privy, uh, to the same information that the public is at this point, which is that it appears as though he's going in two-week increments.
Yeah.
Uh, and that as he gets closer to April fifteenth, he'll reassess, uh, and make a determination, uh, moving forward. Again, you're privy to the same, uh, data that suggests that the peak, um, is towards the latter half of April.
Right.
Uh, and then if that's the case, I would think that it stands to logic that he'll extend at least another two weeks through, uh, April thirtieth.
So when, when you talked about the third option being move break, you're talking more about like cancelling break because we're not really moving it to later in April or early in May or anything like that. Um, because if we did, then we wouldn't be on the hook for the 92K, correct?
Correct. We're, we're essentially talking about cancelling it and rolling the dice that it, that perhaps there's some time that we can capture in June. Especially if Regents exams are canceled and, and there are some other changes. I would preface that comment by saying that as, based on what the state has done thus far, any extension of the executive order closing schools, entails that, or the expectation comes with that, that school is in session. So theoretically, if he were to extend through, for instance, July one, the expectation would be that school would be in session, uh, all along, which would not afford us the opportunity to take the, the break later.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Uh, this, this is Chris and, um, I'm going to be a little cryptic here, but based on the email that you had sent about, uh, another district, I happened to be on a personal call before this where it was, um, I got information that would suggest that it was not the option that you interpreted that letter.
Okay.
It was a different option that would require an executive session discussion.
Okay. Um, I, I can tell you that, um, anecdotally, uh, a lot of the districts in Nassau County are planning on taking their breaks. Uh, and a lot of the districts in Suffolk, um, not as many districts are planning on taking their breaks. The reasons for that, I could speculate, but in terms of knowing the, the landscape, that is, that is the deal at this point. And, and I guess the, the pertinent part of that is that Sag Harbor is not alone in wrestling with this, uh, issue, especially, especially given the fact that the information seems to be changing daily. We were hoping, uh, that when we first be, first became aware of this issue, that there would be some greater clarity and perhaps an accommodation announced the latter half of this week, and that's why we wanted to wait. Um, but here it is Thursday and we don't have the clarification that we were hoping for.
And, uh, just to add, uh, this is Ellie, that every district has its own contractual obligations, its own number of conference days and snow days and when they would have been taken. So every district is a little bit in, in a little different position depending upon how they've used or not used those days.
Yeah, it would seem that, um, I know Jeff, you said you didn't want to speculate on reasons, but I would imagine that some of the reason why some of the Suffolk County districts are not taking a spring break is because they might not have delivered instruction right away and just closed and then adjusted their calendar so that they already took their spring break. Would that be a fair assumption, you think?
That is a fair assumption.
So just to understand the, just to make sure we, we understand what the administrators are suggesting, you guys would be suggesting probably what option number two, that we, um, we adhere to the original district calendar, um, but post remote learning opportunities in order to be compliant with law, kind of like what we've heard some other districts are doing. So staff wouldn't have to come in, they could take off those days. So we wouldn't be on the hook for additional teacher salary days beyond 180. But, um, anybody who wants to use those opportunities to learn, the opportunities are there and posted for them. Is that what you guys are recommending?
I'll speak, I'll speak for myself and the answer is yes, but, uh, Mr. Malone and Ms. Carriero, who are the elementary and middle school principals, feel free to chime in.
Sure. Um, this is, this is Matt Malone. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. So, um, yes, I, as the elementary principal, um, very much aligned with the comments that Mr. Nichols presented a few moments ago. I think with the, with the thoughtful and measured approach that we've all tried to adhere to since back, back on March eleventh, when we made the decision to close schools, we, we've been on a path to, um, start with a remote learning plan that, um, presented more review and, um, practice opportunities, and those are the ones that the, the students have been engaging in to date. And then as a faculty, speaking of the faculty, particularly at the elementary school, we've been working tremendously hard and, um, there's been a level of real commitment and dedication to preparing for the next phase, which will be, as Jeff had mentioned, our, our thought is to launch that on Monday, April thirteenth. Um, with, with all of that in mind, and in addition, just to echo the previous comments, you know, the, the feedback is that while the learning experiences have been, um, rewarding in many cases, there's been, you know, there's been a lot of, a lot of challenge, a lot of adjustment. There's been a lot of work on the part of the families to, you know, rearrange their lives and deal with everything that's going on. So the, um, the thought academically as well as socially and emotionally is that, you know, providing learning opportunities next week that families can choose to take part in is the good one. And then if families also choose to maybe take a, take a bit of a pause, also, um, have some family time, there are some important holidays next week as well. Those, all those thoughts have gone into, you know, our, um, our mindset as we, as we've been leading up to this point. So, so option two would be definitely the one that would have my recommendation at this time.
And this is Brittany Carriero, middle school principal, and I completely agree with Mr. Malone and Mr. Nichols. We have been very measured, as they keep saying, when we've been rolling out this remote learning plan for our students, in that we've made sure, as Mr. Malone, I'm going to pretty much reiterate what he said, we're balancing the social, emotional wellbeing of our children while also balancing this rigor. I know there's been, um, debates about it back and forth on either end. However, the reason for that is, this is unprecedented times and are, as Sag Harbor and our philosophy is always putting our children first. So we were very thoughtful in rolling out the remote learning as well as making sure when planning it on that thirteenth, as Mr. Malone stated, and Mr. Nichols, it's going to be more organized and more upping the level that it is right now. On the middle school, high school, I don't know if Mr. Nichols touched upon this, but we did have a teacher task force to put together and they surveyed our teachers to see what worked and what didn't work, also talked to parents and students to see what opportunities were best. And we've been having weekly faculty meetings. I know that Mr. Malone has been doing the same to keep in touch and also to make sure that we're doing it all together and collaboratively to make the best, um, programming for our children. On another note, I know Ms. Tyce, you explained that we might have misinterpreted what the option two was from that other school. I did check in with one of our, one of those administrators at that school district directly, and they stated that they are providing remote learning activities for them. However, they will be on vacation. So that is my input. So I agree with Matt and Jeff.
So just for clarity, and I appreciate very much that we have all these options to examine. I think it's really helpful and I know that it's difficult in these times of lack of clarity from the state. Option number four, is that the option that, um, we know, uh, would not cost us any more out of pocket? That's kind of the guarantee wouldn't cost us out of pocket either with state aid at risk or additional funding to, uh, employees?
It could, uh, potentially impact additional funding or costs as they relate to employees, but that cost would be minimal.
You mean for the first, for, for which one?
Option number four.
Right. Uh, what I'm saying is, um, I'm just raising that to, the financial risk, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing recommendations of number two and they seem to be sound from many perspectives. What is the kind of maximum financial risk we could have if we go down that path?
The, the, and that's an unknown and I, perhaps I didn't articulate it. If, if the governor, uh, or the state were to apply the state aid, uh, formula, uh, as it's been used in the past, each day would comprise, uh, one one hundred and eightieth of our state aid, which is 1.8 million, which would be $10,000 a day that we didn't comply, uh, or meet the 180-day threshold. So theoretically, if we missed, if we fell short by three days, it would be 30 grand, four days, 40 grand, and five days, which would be the max, would be $50,000. But what I said before is we can't assume, and this was based on a conversation I had with council, that that formula will be what's applied moving forward. It's unlikely, but the state could determine that in violating or not meeting that 180-day threshold and not meeting the, the directive, uh, of, of the fact that schools should be in session throughout the executive order period, the state could say, you know what? You didn't comply with our edict and we're going to take away state aid for the entire, um, executive order period. Whether it's 15 days or 30 days or 45 days, whatever it is, there's just an unknown out there at this point. Highly unlikely, but I don't want to assure you that we're limited to the one one hundred and eightieth formula that I previously reviewed.
So then it sounds like this may not be the way to go, but it sounds like from a financial standpoint, the least risky is number four, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we, uh, go into an executive session and talk about number four?
No, we can't. It's a little complicated, um, because I'm the host of this meeting and so I'd need to set up another line and then somehow, it's, it's kind of complicated. Um, there, I can speak though, a little bit of the downsides of number four without getting into the nitty gritty of it. And the downside of number four is that, um, it, what Jeff was saying in terms of taking a measured approach towards online learning, that, um, it might be the least risky cost-wise, but that the, the district is prepared to roll out a more, I don't want to say intense, but a, a new level of online learning as of the thirteenth. And so it, it would kind of be more of the same for next week if we were to go with option four. And it would be done in, in some haste, is my understanding, because they would only have tomorrow to prepare.
I think the part that I'm, I'm confused on, and I just would like to understand a little better, is that if the teachers, and you know, help me if I'm not understanding this correctly, if the teachers are prepared to go forward with a new learning plan, starting on like the fourteenth, um, is that because they're going to be preparing it all next week? Or is it ready to go because they've only got one more day? And if it's an online plan, whether it starts the fourteenth or starts the sixth, I think the only, as, as a teacher, I think the only reason it would make a difference to me is if I was planning on, on getting it together next week, which teachers do all the time, right? Like they work outside the contractual day all the time. So I'm not saying it one way or the other. I'm just trying to understand if, if they were like preparing, kind of preparing next week.
So for, I'll speak for the middle school, high school. Ms. Carriero mentioned before that we had a faculty advisory committee that surveyed, um, all of the teachers over the last, the part of the last, uh, week, week and a half. And the purpose of the committee really, or their central charge, was to talk to their peers and find out, you know, what was working well, what wasn't working well and why. So that committee, um, briefed the administrators this morning on their findings. And the goal is to roll out those recommendations, um, to the entire faculty, um, this weekend and then allow, uh, as per your question, allow the faculty to spend, um, the break at their leisure, coming up, um, with plans that reflect, uh, the findings, uh, of the committee.
So Jeff, based on that, then it sounds like there's an expectation that staff is working anyway during the break.
Yes, in terms of planning, correct. Planning, planning in a thoughtful way, um, to, to, to implement learning effective the thirteenth. And, you know, a big part of that planning is going to be taking the findings of the committee and, um, putting them into a structured plan, um, mindful of the scheduling aspects that were covered by the committee. Uh, I mean, the committee's report is roughly 10 pages in, in length and covers not only delivery, um, models, but also scheduling issues, access issues, equity issues. So I think that the planning, your statement is accurate in that they'll be working anyway, but I think the, the, the type of work they'll be doing will really be different, um, than what they've done thus far, uh, not necessarily congruent with producing lessons every day.
I'm just, I'm really concerned with the financial liability and additional costs that we could be incurring by going down a different path.
Yeah, and this is, this is Ellie. I'd like to add also that with regard to option two, we, uh, when the, um, the, the time period that we close actually started, we, when the time period that we close actually started, we had calculated that we had a leeway of two days within our calendar. So that when all the days were counted at the end of the year, one of the possibilities is that we would actually have two days that could be given credit for so that it wouldn't be the full week that we would actually have lost those days.
I'm sorry, two of the days would be counted as us being open next week?
No, no, not, no, just towards the 180, that we actually had, when we counted up the number of days that we had in our calendar, we had a leeway of two days above the 180 so that we had a little bit more flexibility.
So the two days that we closed before everybody else, we, we had a little bit of a buffer there.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, do we need to, I know that the 13th was supposed to be a snow day. Do we have some flexibility with that? Like, do we, you know what I mean? Like, should we start the learning? I don't know.
That's a good question. I, my commitment is to, at this point, is to start on the 13th and deal with the three snow days that are, that at this point are, TASH is technically entitled to, deal with those questions later in June.
Yeah.
So I was able to figure out how to, I made Scott a co-host of the meeting and then sent all of the board members and administrators a link to a separate Zoom meeting for an executive session. So if you guys do want to go into exec, we can do that. And then hopefully, if I X out of this, then Scott will remain the host so that we don't lose everybody. So we can try that if folks want to do that.
Yeah. Do we have a representative from TASH that could join us?
It looks like Chase is on the call.
I thought I saw Jim as well.
There are a few of us here.
I'm on the call. Jim, Jim Kinnear is on the call.
Okay, why don't I send the link, Jim, I'm going to send it to you, the link for exec. And then feel free to, if there are other members of TASH that you want to have join, you can forward to them as well. And I'll make a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation discussion.
Second.
Hi.
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 Jordana, just so folks know who are on the call, we're going to leave, but then we're going to come back and rejoin this call. So if they want to hear the resolution of this, we will be coming back.
Can I just ask, I know Chris joined, Victoria, I know Chris Tice joined after we started the meeting. Did Alex or Brian join?
No, they're not on. They couldn't.
Okay.
I'm an I, Victoria.
Okay. Jordana?
I'm an I, yep.
Susan? Okay, Yorgos?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous.
And Scott, if there's any issue with hosting the meeting, feel free to text me and I'll try to figure it out. All right. Thanks. Hey, Scott, I'm back on and I started recording again.
Oh, see that? Thank you.
Jordana, will we be voting via Board Docs?
Victoria, what'd you say?
I said, I'm ready to go, whichever way you want to go.
Okay, sounds good.
And it seems like we have to have two resolutions, right?
Depends on which option we go with.
No, I'm just thinking the second one has to do with the pushing back of the snow days.
Right. No matter what, we have to do that, you're right.
Right. And that probably should be a second resolution and not a separate one and not the same one.
Yeah.
So do I need my computer or not? Are we going to use Board Docs?
If you don't have it, we can just do it manually.
I'd rather do it manually.
Okay. Okay, so then just to take care of the snow day issue, then can I get a motion to?
We need to reconvene.
Well, yeah, can I get a motion to reconvene out of executive session?
So moved. It's Chris.
Thank you.
Second, Yorgos.
Thank you. How do you vote?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Diana, aye.
Yorgos, aye.
Confirm, Susan. Susan, you vote?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm having issues.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and then to take care of the snow day issue for April 13th, originally, given that we haven't any snow, haven't had any snow days this year, April 13th was supposed to be a snow day. And so we just want to, can't, you know, change the calendar so that's no longer a backup snow day. And so we want to postpone when we have that snow day. So can I get a motion to change the school calendar so that April 13th is no longer a snow day? And that snow day will be moved to another time to be determined?
So, second. All right, Diana, so moved and Chris seconds.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to do this verbally. So Jordana, how do you vote?
Yes, aye.
Diana?
Yes.
Chris?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And Yorgos?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous. Five zero.
Okay, and then in terms of the discussion regarding next week, guys, open it up. What are you guys thinking?
Don't anybody speak up at once. Well, I want to, I want to thank the administrators and TASH because it sounds like there was a lot of thought into the potential options that could be presented. And there is no easy option to take. And it would appear that the districts on Long Island, including our surrounding districts, are doing a variety of things. Some are doing two, some are doing four. So there's, and there's not a clear path that the state has been able to lay out so that we know what the repercussions of doing two and some of the other options are, which just makes it more challenging, I think, to evaluate how to proceed.
Yeah, I guess, I'm happy to go first. I wanted to let you guys go. But I, I was debating, I think, so, you know, the lawyer in me wants to be as compliant with law as possible. So I'm leaning towards option four because it's both compliant with law, but doesn't put the district in a hole for a lot of money. And I appreciate TASH's willingness to work with us on it. And they've been so good to the district ever since we closed by just, you know, coming together so quickly to create this learning plan. So I think it's, you know, I think it, we should be able to, you know, respect that offer. That, that's kind of where I am. I just, the one qualification is, is if we go with option four, I just think we need the community to be aware that they are still allowed to take off days and that teachers are allowed to take off days for religious holidays such as Passover and, you know, Good Friday, and I think there's another Catholic holiday in there as well. So just want to make sure that, you know, the expectations are set there where people can still observe their holidays as planned.
Can I ask a qualifying question, a clarifying question? Which is, if we go with option four and staff does take that option of taking a personal day or observing a holiday, a religious holiday, will there be a mechanism so that students will be aware of that?
Yeah, they'd have to, they would just post it to their, whatever the device they use to communicate with their students. So if it was Google Classrooms, then that's what they would post it to.
Okay.
They would just notify their students that, you know, hey, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be around on Thursday. If you have any questions, I'll be back on Friday, that sort of a thing. Right. Or vice versa, whatever.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I could, I could support either option. I think they're both good options. I'm kind of with Jordana. I lean towards the more compliant and less risky as far as the gamble with the state and also providing maybe a tad more structure for students if they so choose over the next, you know, break. But then again, if, as Chris said, there's been varying degrees of engagement on students and teachers just because this is also new for everybody. So some people may wanting, maybe wanting more structure next week and others may be wanting a break next week. And so I like the idea of having a little bit of flexibility with, you know, holidays and deadlines and that sort of thing.
Go ahead.
Okay. I mean, I lean towards number four. My only concern I have is given that it's Thursday night, if that's going to give enough time to the teachers to prepare the material for next week. So especially on the elementary side. So that's my only concern. But otherwise, I mean, I'm leaning towards going with number four.
Yeah, this is Chris. I would agree with everything that the other trustees have mentioned. I know that teachers were going to be, under the scenario of number two, they were going to be preparing some work. If we go with four, obviously there would need to be a little more structure and probably more thought and work put into it. And I think we would all have to have the understanding that the work that would be structured for next week, if we go with number four, is not going to be reflective, potentially of a typical week because they wouldn't have as much time to plan. But that being said, having some work and some structure may be better for most students than having, having less of that. And I do, I do like the option where we are, we know we're in compliance and where it's not as open-ended what our fiscal liability might be. I'm just concerned about, about kind of not knowing how those cards could play out.
I was just going to say the same thing, Chris. I think it's smart for everybody to just kind of manage their expectations about next week, knowing that the plan was that the ramped up version was going to be the week after.
Right.
Yeah.
I can go either way. In the beginning of our conversation, I like to empower the administrators because they're the people on those front lines. So I was leaning towards, you know, option two. I know there was a little talk and discussion about what school districts was doing what. But I like to think that, you know, our administrators are at our front line. They're the ones who are communicating with TASH and, you know, I like to empower them. I really could go either way now after we had the conversation. And given that I'm not against option four.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve option four.
Yeah, the one thing I'm thinking, Diana, is do I need to have a, like, in terms of a resolution, right? Since we don't have an MOA in front of us to approve, do we want to give approval for an MOA that will include certain things in it? And if so, do we need to then state it publicly? And I don't have a problem stating it publicly. I just wasn't sure kind of protocol that way.
Well, and I was thinking more about the calendar being the thing that needs to be addressed now because the MOA at some point we would probably need to approve. That's a good question. But that would have to be drafted by the attorney. Yeah, another meeting, exactly.
Officially, I just don't want to have to have another meeting tomorrow.
You're right. So there's probably two resolutions. One resolution will be about that school will not be in session tomorrow, next week. So that's, so that's one resolution. And the separate resolution might be about the agreement with the bargaining units. And are there any other bargain units affected by the decision to have school next week?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, so like teaching assistants, if they're doing work now, this doesn't impact them?
Not that I'm aware of, not the middle school, high school. And, and, you know, I can address that with Mr. Malone tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion. So I guess, Diana, I'm going to move to amend your motion, which would be to go with option four. But so it's to first amend the board, the school calendar so that school will be in session next week. But as part of school being in session next week, authorize our superintendent and attorney to negotiate a memorandum of agreement with the teachers' union and any other unions as needed to put in place the mechanisms and terms that are in option four that was presented to the board.
We still legally have to approve the contract. It may be.
We could just do that retroactively, but just authorizing them to negotiate the terms and then we would sign it later.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good, Jordana.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, let me go down. Jordana?
Yes, aye.
Okay, Diana?
Yes, aye.
Chris?
Yes, aye.
Susan?
Susan? Sorry, yes.
Yeah, Yorgos?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, everybody, for your time. And can I get a motion to end the meeting?
I think the only thing I would add is that because we are a little bit cryptic because of the cash negotiation, just to be clear, there will be a communication coming out to bring us in compliance with the executive order by Governor Cuomo that we need to be in session until April 15th, even if it means we're in session during our school break. So put simply, spring break is canceled.
Yes, thanks. And yes, a communication will go out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send that out to the community tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, so Jordana?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Susan?
Aye. Yes.
Yorgos?
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.